Good.
Let's make sure it shows up. Yes, it's showing up. Okay.
I call the Board of Adjustment, called the Order. As Chair of the Board of Adjust, Co-Chair of the Board of Adjustment, due to the COVID-19 coronavirus crisis in accordance with Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 Pursuant Executive Order 2020-04, this Board is authorized to meet electronically. Please note there was no physical location to observe or listen contemporaneously to the meeting, which is authorized through Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, this is to confirm that we are utilizing Microsoft Team for this electronic meeting. All members of the Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through Microsoft Team and the public access to contemporaneously listen if necessary, participate in the meeting through dialing the following: 1-603-664-0240 and conference ID 445751693 So all votes will be roll call vote. Okay, roll call. Dave Whitten.
Present.
George Bailey.
Present.
And Ray Demarest, Vice Chair is here. Karen Forbes is absent and Cheryl Huckins is absent, I believe. Yes, so, all right, so everybody who's on, just so you know, there are only... Who is this?
I don't think it was anybody.
That was Matt coming back in somehow. Ask the people to, other people to mute themselves.
Yeah, yeah, please mute yourself until you're ready to talk. So Karen Forbes, our Chair, we had a last minute cancellation. She was supposed to be here. We can't get ahold of Cheryl Huckins, who should be here. So that would give us a five-member Board. So we only have three members present tonight.
Cheryl's trying to get in. I'm sorry.
Okay, let's, let's, let's wait.
Hey.
Wifi is being an issue, I guess.
That's a big piece of paper, Dave.
Yeah. Thanks to Barbara.
Oh, Marcia, I believe I got your copy of the minutes, by the way. This was in my package.
Oh.
Says Marcia's copy on it.
Oh, that's okay. I know what they say.
Says the same as it's all mine.
I know, it's funny because we, all the packets are kind of grouped up together and we, we had that issue with some of the planning board members that, that some of the parts and pieces got missed and they're like, well, I didn't get it. And I'm like, okay, I counted them out. Have we gotten Cheryl yet?
I haven't seen her.
She has a hotspot. Maybe it's not too hot today.
She's here. Somebody just joined.
That you, Cheryl? Must have been me. No? They didn't have to admit her. She had to, she would have come in herself. She would be able to come in herself.
Yeah, she's kind of critical, so we kind of have to wait.
Yeah, there'll be unanimous votes tonight.
Yeah, optimist.
Always.
Mr. Chairman, can we move the meeting along and maybe if the individual can say yes and no, if they want to accept three?
Marcia, you want to give them one more call?
It's only, it's only request, Mr. Chairman.
No, I know, I know, George.
Um, well, I, I know Cheryl's, oh, I got a text. Hold on, let me see what this is. No, no, not anything. Well, Cheryl's trying to get in. Um, this applicant is one that had returned and was adding the items that were requested. I don't know, I mean, that we could get started and, and Cheryl was, is able to join us. That's great because it's the continued application. Are you comfortable with that, George?
I'm waiting to get started. I'm waiting for the chairman to talk.
Well, I was hoping that we'd have four, but all right. I guess we'll proceed at this point. I mean, it is almost 13 after seven. So, all right, so for everybody who's on the agenda tonight, there are only three members of the Board present. So in voting on your case, we would have to be unanimous with the three that are currently present in order to approve whatever application or variance that you're requesting. So when I call the case, what I'll do is if there's still only three members, we'll give you the opportunity to continue to the following month. Uh, if you, if you deemed that's what you want to do, and one of us will make a motion or we'll proceed to do that.
Just admitted Cheryl.
All right.
So.
Cheryl Huckins, are you present?
Hold on. There, okay, I'm set.
Cheryl, are you present? Cheryl Huckins?
Yay.
I am, I am present.
You are present. All right, so I have Cheryl, just an update. I've already read through the whole gamut, you know, as far as what needs to be done. And we were just kind of waiting to call the first case. So, which I will do now. So there are four members present. Me, Dave Whitten, George Bailey, and yourself. So, all right. So I'm going to call case number 126-12-1/12.2GR-21-3, variance owners Stephen and Joy Porter. This is a continued case from last week. We had made some requests relevant to that case. I think everybody has received a print in their package. Is the, I think, who's here is Mr. Porter present?
Actually, Matt Peterson with Keach Norstrom Associates.
Okay, Matt, that's right, I recall. Yep, okay, all right. And from what I, from what I see from the plan, you kind of did what we had asked from what we had described last, last meeting, so.
You'd like me to give a quick presentation, I could?
Sure, go for it.
Again, Matt Peterson with Keach Norstrom Associates here. We're representing the Porters. Can you guys see my screen at this point?
Yes.
Uh, yes.
Uh, so just to give you a quick overview, we were here on April 21st, 2021, presented our complete variance application with the arguments requested by the Board members to make some minor adjustments to the request, which we have made and we are here tonight with those. As such, we have reduced one of the variances, which was 5.1.12, which asked for the waiver to, uh, variance to allow the well off property. We now have the well on property. So we basically are asking for the one variance that is in two locations in your regulations, the Article 4.11 Minimum Standards for Setbacks and 5.113, which goes to the building structure setbacks will comply with 4.11. So they're kind of one variance, but two locations there in your regulations. Just a quick overview, this property's been in the Porter's family for about 100 years. As I said, it's located right along this tree line here. Kind of comes out to about here and comes back up in this location here. So we're talking this grove of trees right on the northeast side of the North River Pond, and we are talking about a sliver about 50 feet wide, right on the tree line that's located here. Um, as I outlined at the last hearing, the Porters had come to us about, well, about six months ago now, about the possibility of doing AD Union here, when it was discovered during the survey that they actually had three existing lots on the property. Um, with that is why we came to you guys to discuss the project that we had in front of the Board last month, which had a building set about 19.1 feet off and five feet off the other. We had a driveway that was a little bit off of the property line we're going to share, then we had the well-off property. What we did is we took care of the comments that the Board had. I sit-centered the building as best I could, 12.01, 12.01, 12 feet and 11.96, just based on the skewing of the, of the property lines. I can't get them all exactly there. Uh, the well being put right next to the building, uh, and then I put the driveway down in this location along the property line so that it could have a shared driveway access there per your regulations. Those were the comments that you guys asked us to take a look at the last hearing. I'd be more than happy to go through the five criteria again, but I did read those into the record last month as well. So I guess I'd kind of open it up to the Board for questions or how Chairman would like me to proceed.
So, uh, I, yeah, I think we're good with the reading of the five requirements. Uh, anybody have any questions?
I'm satisfied the way it's set up, Ray.
So, anybody else?
Me too.
I have a question.
Yes.
Uh, you mentioned a shared driveway, shared.
Oh, who's speaking, please? Who's speaking, please?
Uh, Benjamin O'Kendall, Lot 56.
Okay, what do you? 56. I'm not seeing 56 on my map. So where are you relative to this current property, sir?
I am, so if you're facing Long Shores Drive, I'm on the right side of the property, so I'm the next neighbor over, I'm 108 Long Shores Drive.
Wrong project. Wrong application. You just, tell him he just needs to wait. Um, that application will be coming up.
Okay.
I apologize. I didn't know we were talking.
All right, all right, so we were talking, the Board was talking. We, anybody else have any questions for the applicant from the Board? No? Uh, is anybody here to speak in favor? Hearing none? Anybody in opposition? Hearing none. All right, the Board will close, the meeting will close and we'll have discussion amongst the Board. Uh, I think personally, I think they did exactly what we had asked them to do, and I'm looking for a motion.
Motion to accept and grant, grant the waiver. Variance.
Yeah, variance, variance, yes. Any second?
I'll second.
George Bailey seconds. Uh, all right, Cheryl Huckins?
Hi.
George Bailey?
Hi.
Dave Whitten?
Hi.
Ray Demarest, I vote aye. Okay, the variance has been granted.
Thank you very much for your time and enjoy the rest of the night.
Thank you, Senator. All right, all right, call the second case. Uh, this is 101-56-GR-21-ZBA variance owner Matthew Coston-McWay. Requested by applicant for variance from Article 4 Dimensional Requirements, Table 2, to allow a front setback of 21.2, where 40 is required on the setback, 28.8. Uh, this is the Long Shores Drive. So this might be the one. Uh, is Mr. Coston-McWay here?
Um, Mr. Chairman, this is Chris Barry with Berry Surveying and Engineering representing the applicant.
Okay, yes, sir. Do you want to present your case?
Oh, yep, I apologize.
Yep. If you're here representing the client.
Yeah, I, yep, I'm on it. Thank you. Uh, let's see. So, uh, Mr. Chair, members of the Board, my name is Christopher Berry with Berry Surveying and Engineering, representing the applicant here this evening. Project is located on Long Shores Drive. Um, pretty close to the entrance that you pull in. Um, as you can see here on the locust map, on septic design, uh, here is Second Crown Point Road, and so as you pull onto Long Shores Drive, you come up the slope and it's one of the first lots on the right-hand side. Uh, so we're across the street from Berry River. Um, so what the applicant is proposing to do is a proposed structure that's within the front 40-foot setback with the front deck and stoop and steps that would place the structure about 21 feet from the front boundary line. And then he's proposing a 32-foot wide uh, along the street, a 28-foot deep, uh, standard colonial-style uh, structure, um, that would sit, uh, in most locations about 28 to 29 feet from the boundary line. So the closest point to the overhang would be 28.8, which is on the southern side of the, the boundary line. So as you can see on the plot plan, uh, this is a, what we call a double lot in my office. Uh, these two lots were merged together as part of the original Long Shores Drive subdivision. And even with that merger that took place in the early 70s, uh, having a 30-foot sideline setback and a 40-foot setback really is quite limiting on the site. Another item on site that's pretty limiting is there's a pretty large amount of ledge here in the center of the, the project site. And so what we're trying to do is to keep as much vegetation on site as possible and keep the level of disturbance as low as possible. Uh, that structure is pushed forward, uh, and that's the request, or reason for the request for the front setback. Uh, driveway is proposed to the northern side and is not a shared driveway. Um, and as you can see on the septic plan, uh, we would propose the well be, um, off the boundary line and sort of off the end of the driveway. And that will allow for well rig to get in, set up, and basically drill a well. Uh, on the septic design, you can see the exact same structure that's uh, being proposed, uh, the proposed septic tank and the effluent disposal area here, uh, in the front corner. So, uh, the topographics on site, uh, the center of the site, as I mentioned, is, uh, pretty rocky and ledgy, and that shelters right off into a pretty good sand and gravel area here at the front of the site. And so that's sort of what allows the effluent disposal system to be in the front still corner, um, and would allow the structure to be built uh, here at the front. Uh, we are proposing, because we are anticipating some ledge, uh, towards the back of the structure. We are proposing, uh, this lab-on-grade structure. Uh, so again, to try and limit the, uh, amount of disturbances on site. To minimize the amount of blasting, things of that nature. Um, the application, the applicant provided some, uh, some basic uh, drawings of the drawings. Uh, and again, this is, I think, a pretty modest, small, uh, colonial structure that will fit, uh, pretty well in the neighborhood. It won't be overpowering, uh, and won't tower over, uh, the rest of what has been built in the neighborhood, uh, in the past. Um, I did provide some photographs as part of the application package. I think you can see most of the site is wooded. Um, and, um, that area would be obviously de-vegetated for the proposed construction. So, uh, with that, I'd be happy to try and answer any questions you might have uh, and/or, um, I'd be happy to move to the five criteria.
Could you, please move, yep, five criteria, please?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I have a statement to make. I just completed, uh, a business transaction with, uh, uh, Berry Survey and Engineering, and at no time was this project discussed. So if anybody should notice that I have had dealings with them this month and last month, uh, this project was not discussed. I want that to go into the record for that, please. Thank you.
All right, go over the five, five criteria for the variance, please?
The 40-foot front setback, the special conditions of the property, uh, the lot is two special conditions as it relates to the front 40-foot front setback. Uh, it's rather oddly shaped, uh, so it's not a rectangle. Uh, it tapers. Um, and then the, uh, the fact that we have, uh, exposed surface ledge towards the middle of the site and to push the structure back to meet the 40-foot front setback, uh, would sort of require that that ledge be blasted out and removed, uh, which I think we can all agree is pretty disruptive uh, and would pose a, a hard gift to the applicant. Uh, the granting of the variance can be consistent with the spirit of the ordinance. The spirit of the ordinance is to create uniformity in a rural, uh, actual town. Uh, in this particular case, I think, uh, we could all drive up and down both Berry River and Long Shores and recognize, uh, that each lot, uh, has its own oddities in there, and, uh, this lot has, uh, many of the same attributes that those lots have also. And though the spirit of the ordinance is to create consistency at a 40-foot front setback, uh, I would argue that the consistency of the neighborhood, uh, is in keeping with what this applicant is proposing. Grant to variance, uh, will not result in diminution of surrounding property values. Uh, the underlying use is in, uh, single-family zone. Uh, the applicant is proposing a single-family home, uh, that is not overpowering, uh, in any way, uh, residential construction in a residential neighborhood, no detriment to values, uh, in the area, and may actually increase values in the area, uh, based on the current. Granting the variance would do substantial justice. Uh, the substantial, uh, substantial justice test is whether or not, uh, the, uh, gain to the applicant outweighs the detriment to the ordinance. In this particular case, I don't think there's a detriment to the ordinance by granting a 40-foot, uh, variance to the front, where the applicant is requesting a reasonable-sized structure, and the obvious gain of allowing a, an existing building lot of records since the 1960s, uh, has a, a large impact on the, uh, current landowner. Granted, variance, uh, will not be contrary to public interest. The public interest is to ensure that lots are built out in a reasonable format. Much like the applicant before you, we chose to perfectly center the structure on, on the lot and not favor one side or another. Uh, the applicant has chosen a residential structure that I think is, uh, reasonable for this lot, and therefore, uh, I don't think that is a detriment on the public interest, uh, at hand. One of the special conditions of the, uh, warrant and unnecessary hardship to the applicant if the variance is denied. I think I've described the special conditions of the property are both geometric and, and those cannot be overcome without, uh, large disruption uh, and large construction costs to the applicant, and would pose an unnecessary hardship to, uh, the individual by not allowing him to build, uh, within the front setback, whereas the rest of the neighborhood likely has the same, um, afflictions on each of those lots. Uh, with respect to the 30-foot sideline setbacks, again, the special condition of this particular piece of property is that uh, it's just simply not wide enough to meet the setback. So we're not here asking, uh, the zoning board to, uh, grant a variance to something that we could meet. We can't meet any setback as it relates to sideline setbacks, and that has to do with the, um, hourglass shape of the lot, and so the special conditions of the property are, are just that. And to disallow, uh, this applicant to sort of infringe on those with some really basic housing needs would pose unnecessary hardship uh, to the applicant. Granting the variance would be consistent with the spirit of the ordinance. I think the spirit of the ordinance here again, uh, proposes consistency in the neighborhood. The fact that we have, uh, basically centered the proposed structure on the midline of the lot and have proposed, proposed a structure that is, uh, congruent with others in the neighborhood, uh, keeps us in line with the spirit of that ordinance. Granting the variance will not result in diminution of, uh, surrounding property values. Here again, this is a single-family zone and we are proposing a light use, uh, and therefore, uh, surrounding property values will not be diminished. Uh, granting the variance would do substantial justice. Again, the substantial justice test is whether or not the gain to the applicant outweighs any detriment to the ordinance, um, and, uh, we're not proposing any detriment to our ordinance in general. This is in a neighborhood where variances are required on almost every single piece of property, and it's well-recognized that way. And, uh, the applicant has done everything he's, uh, been able to do to minimize the impact by, uh, shortening up the house and, uh, really proposing a, a really reasonably sized house. Uh, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. Uh, granting the variance, uh, would not be contrary to the public interest because it will allow for residential development in a residential zone. It is again, congruent with, uh, all of the rest of the, uh, neighborhood, and it doesn't propose anything sort of out of the ordinary or against the underlying zoning ordinance.
Okay. All right, uh, any questions from the Board?
I have none.
I don't either.
Dave? Right, uh, any questions? Anybody in opposition to this case?
Sorry, Ray, I was muted. I have a question. I have a question.
Sorry, Dave. So we're still into Board questions of the applicant. Dave, go ahead.
Can you, um, is there, what is across the street from Long Shores Drive from this property? Is it just land? I see you have a slope, heavy slope land or something there, but can you tell me what's across the street?
Uh, across the street is actually another, uh, lot that is currently under development for single-family.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
All right, any more questions from the Board?
I think Cheryl's dog has a question.
I don't. It's my dog.
The dog has a question. Is there anybody here to speak in opposition to this case?
Yes, yes, Roberta Pigott.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes, could you speak, speak your name and what is your relationship to the case?
It's Roberta Pigott, um, and invited to the property. If we could quiet the dog down.
Could you just mute Cheryl, please? Is that possible?
This is Roberta Pigott. Can I speak?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Yes, uh, you bought the property and I'm in opposition of it because it's too close to my reach field and septic. There's also historical stone wall on that property. It's a wildlife crossing zone to the river for deer, moose, foxes, bears, and bobcat. And I need that 40-foot required front setback. And I need the required 30-foot side setback. And in light of the requirements, I'm in opposition of this being approved.
Okay. Anybody else here to speak in opposition?
Uh, aye.
Speak, state your name and your relationship to the case, please?
Benjamin O'Kendall. I'm on the, uh, basically Roberta's nerve neighbor. I'm on, I'm on, uh, the other side of the property there. Um, so, so the first thing that I'll say is, you know, one of the reasons that we have these rules and regulations in place is to, to make sure that we're, we're taking into effect the health and the safety of, of those both living in the structure and around the structure. So anytime we depart from, 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 from zoning, um, uh, rules that we have in place, we're kind of departing from, from that argument. Um, there's a couple of things that, that, that were noted. Uh, for example, the increase in value, um, I think what people find valuable in this area is privacy. Um, and, and that's going to take a lot of privacy away from Roberta. Both Roberta and I, um, what we're creating here in a very small space of, of about 100 feet is, and, and that's the thing, I could barely imagine seeing a driveway go between that area, uh, let alone the fact that there's my driveway, that driveway, Roberta's, and the lot building, I mean, it's, it'll be four driveways on top of a blind spot hill on the road. It's just, I've got two small kids. Um, it's just, it's not, I'm not buying the case that this is going to be, uh, uh, you know, anything worth value. Um, and then, you know, again, with the size issue, it, it, it kind of doesn't matter what you put in that structure. Like I said, I can't imagine a driveway being put there, let alone a two-bedroom house. It, it's going to be a, an overpowering structure. Uh, however you look at it, um, you know, along and in between, you know, my property and that property, there are these beautiful boulders, um, that, you know, which are on my property, by the way, I just don't. beautiful boulders that, you know, which are on my property, by the way, I just don't see that not encroaching on my side of the land. So overall, I'm wholeheartedly in disagreement with it and that's just the way that I feel. So.
Anybody else to speak in opposition?
Hope you guys consider those points.
Anybody else to speak in opposition?
Nobody yet.
You're saying well? Barely hear you. Could you speak a little louder? State your name and your relationship to the case, please. Hello? Am I hearing anybody? All right, I will move on to anybody in favor of this case. Hearing none, I will close the public session and the board will discuss the case. Anybody have any thoughts?
I have none, Ray.
I think, I think you did a very good job placing the house on a difficult lot.
I agree, and it's a, I mean, compared to what we've seen on that road before, I mean, this is a double lot, actually. When you think about it, I mean, we've dealt with a lot of properties on this road that are a lot less than this and I agree that this is a reasonable, reasonable plan. So, anybody, anybody else? Motion?
Is this a buildable lot?
So.
I mean, on, I mean.
When you say buildable, define buildable.
I mean, as far as like originally when it was the, you know, it was obviously subdivided.
It was actually two lots combined, Dave. So back, way back, I guess, the town had an issue with, if you had two lots that had no buildings on them and they were nonconforming, you had to combine them. And I think that's maybe what happened here, right?
I guess that's my question is.
Yeah. So I mean, this originally was probably a fifty foot lot, not a hundred foot lot with, you know, as far as the overall, so, but anyways, I agree, I think it's a reasonable plan for the lot, so. Hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
You gotta, you gotta say something, George, other than.
I make a motion, I make a motion that we approve, one oh one fifty six GR twenty one, ZBA V variance owner for the approved.
All right, George has made a motion, do we have a second?
I second.
All right, Dave Witten, how do you vote?
Aye.
George Bailey?
Aye.
Cheryl Hawkins?
Hi, aye.
Ray Demarest, aye. The variance passes. Thank you, all right. We're going to move on to next case, two thirty nine slash dash two slash two thirty five one comma two comma three dash TC dash sixteen dash variance extension. Owners Dove Development Group, is the applicant present?
Mr. Chair, again, Christopher Berry with Berry Surveying and Engineering.
Yep.
So I really don't have anything to share with fantasy plans here this evening. So the zoning board granted a variance five years ago to allow for a mixed use development to take place on multiple sites out behind the Christmas dove. That variance is set to expire on July twentieth. We are on schedule to be in front of the planning board on July sixth, but for acceptance of an application. But in the event, for some reason, the holidays don't allow that meeting to take place. So for some reason, the planning board wants additional time to review our application for completeness. We wanted to ask the zoning board for a brief extension of our variance to allow the planning board time to consider our planning board application and move forward to acceptance. So that's, that's the reason for the request. We are expeditiously moving along with the project. To date, we've expensed large amounts of money on engineering for the site. You can see that the roadway infrastructure was built a few years back to get to the project. We're in the middle of well permitting for a community well system and we're in the process of finalizing our plans to go to the planning board. So we are quite actively moving ahead with the project. This is not a stale project that will sit around on people's desks for a while. And again, that's the reason for such a short additional request. We're not asking for years, we're asking for a few months to an extended time period.
Any questions from the board?
Mr. Berry covered everything.
Yeah, what's, so I, what's the extension time period? All I have is this piece of paper.
Four months.
Four months, it's on this paper, four months.
December twentieth.
Okay, thank you.
So, December twentieth.
Oh, there it is, I'm sorry, okay, I just have to read.
So is there any questions from the board?
Make a motion to approve for four months.
Hang on, George, hang on.
Private.
Hang on, George.
No more questions from me.
No questions from the board?
Public, the open and closed part yet.
Yeah, yeah, I haven't done that yet, so. Any more questions from the board? No, anybody in favor? Anybody in opposition? I will close the public session, the board will discuss and vote.
I see.
Inward motion?
I make a motion to grant this extension.
To what date? September twenty?
November twenty.
November twenty.
All right, November twenty, seconded?
I second.
Second.
All right, all right, Dave Witten, how do you vote?
Aye.
Cheryl Hawkins?
Aye.
George Bailey?
Aye.
Ray Demarest, aye. All right.
Thank you, have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, call case number one eighteen dash ninety dash GR dash twenty one dash ZBA variance owners Alicia and James Bolio request the applicant for their Article four dimension requirements, table two, to allow a three thirty seven point seven where forty is required and a setback of ten point three where thirty is required on mega point. Is the applicant present?
Yeah, I'm present, Scott Bujo, the land surveyor.
All right.
Can you hear me okay?
As I can.
Yep.
So once I turned my camera on, it started skipping a little bit on my end, so hopefully this holds together.
Go for it. Yep.
Yes, let me see if I can figure out how to open up my mic top here. All right, so I don't know if you can see that, hopefully you can see that. What my applicant is preparing to do is upgrade the existing camp that's on this lot into a full time dwelling. We've already gone through the process of upgrading septic system and that's all approved, the shore land application is all approved. You can see that the existing house is very close to the existing property line by ten point three feet, so I've tried to meet the requirements as best as possible. Just, we held that, that short distance of ten point three feet, so the proposed building is still ten point three from the same lot line. We're meeting the rear setback of thirty feet and we're definitely meeting the other side setback, but we have a little issue with the front as well. But it's still exceeding the current setback of the existing dwelling. So we're making it more conforming and we're definitely upgrading the land by improving the septic system. So that's where we're at, project.
All right, can you go through the five requirements for the variance?
Sure.
We need that in the record.
Okay. So special conditions exist for the ordinance to result in unnecessary hardship to the applicant as defined under the law. The proposed dwelling would need to be reshaped to fit the minimum standards and would be unesthetic, would kind of have to be an oblong shaped house. And that's really the best location just due to the proximities of the wells in the neighboring lots. That's kind of where the leach field has to go and that's where the existing leach field is. So they're just trying to make a two bedroom dwelling full time. Number two, granting the variance would be consistent with the spirit of the ordinance. The proposed dwelling meets or exceeds the setbacks of the existing dwelling. So it either meets that or it's making it a little bit better. Three, granting the variance will not result in diminution of surrounding property values. The dwelling is being upgraded along with the septic system. So the current dwelling is a seasonal camp, it's in kind of disrepair a little bit and they're upgrading that, they're putting a nice porch on it and they're definitely upgrading to one of those clean system, or clean solutions, septic systems, which is pretty much a water treatment facility, just a miniature one. And four, granting the variance would do substantial justice. Be able to update and modernize the dwelling for year round occupancy. Five, granting the variance would not be contrary to public interest. A house, well and septic system already exist on this lot. The house and septic system are being upgraded and should improve the public interest.
So I have a few questions, so the existing house is ten point three currently?
Yes.
So on that requirement, why do you need a variance?
Because it's in a, isn't it, because it's in a different location than the original ten point three violation? Is that why?
Yes, it's not meeting the thirty foot setback that's required, but it's preexisting.
It's not in the exact same spot.
Right, that's.
Okay.
They shifted the ten point three setback violation a little bit.
Shifted for you guys of the property line, gotcha, okay, all right, I see it. So, because you would have been grandfathered, I would think, if it was there, all right. That's all I have for questions, anybody, anybody else from the board have questions?
Thank you for asking that, at least I don't have to.
Anybody else from the board? Any questions?
No.
All right, anybody here in favor of this application? Anybody here in opposition? Hearing none, I will close the public session and the board will discuss. So, comments?
So I think they're, they're doing everything they can to improve the, you know, the systems, like the septic and the location of the property relative to the water. So to me, it's an upgrade to the quality of the water on Swains Lake and then upgrade to the property. I don't have a problem with it.
I agree, anybody else have a comment?
I have none.
Cheryl?
No.
No. All right, do I hear a motion?
So moved to turn around and approve. One one eight dash nine zero GR twenty one ZBA variance.
Wow, George.
Good job, George, I'll second that.
I only need to be trained once.
You did that from memory too, right?
Yeah.
All right, Dave Witten, how do you vote?
Aye.
Cheryl Hawkins?
Aye.
George Bailey?
Aye.
Ray Demarest, aye, variance is approved. Thank you. We got minutes from last month.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of April twenty first from twenty twenty one.
Are you?
Seconded.
All, hang on, George Bailey, how do you vote?
Yes.
Dave Witten?
Uh, yes.
Cheryl Hawkins?
Yes.
Ray Demarest, aye, variance are approved. Hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Seconded.
Second.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Do we need to roll call?
Unanimous.
All right, good night all.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, guys, bye.
Bye bye.